Amy Doyle, our new official BA, Laura Taylor, Dada, 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 Jordi Cotten, our board secretary, and the man behind the curtain, Matt Stone, our IT wizard. All right, the first one to stand for the fight of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come on in Lucy. Come here Miss Lucy. And we are now joined by our new student rep, one of two, Lucy Beardmore. Hi Lucy.
Hi Lucy.
Lucy will be here for an hour and then she will leave for driver's session. Important time in every student's lives. Okay, we have one set of minutes to approve from the June 9th meeting. Do I have a motion for approval?
So.
I'm second.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. We are now at the first public comment portion of the evening. If you would like to comment, please come on up. Three minutes, name and address. There's no one in the audience, I'm gonna go ahead. It's like move forward. Lucy, welcome to the board.
Thank you.
We are now at the student representative portion. School's not in session, but you are welcome to introduce yourself and provide any comments that you so choose.
I'm Lucy Beardmore, I'm a rising junior. I don't have really any comments. Fall sports start in two weeks and I know a lot of teams have had summer training already, but yeah, that's about it.
Amazing. Have you had any fun things happen this summer thus far?
Nothing too exciting, working, some college tours. That's about it.
Aren't you also in a band that's performing tomorrow night at Riverside Pizza?
I am.
At what time?
5:45.
That's correct. I heard there's gonna be like 100 people there, so if you wanna get there, arrive early, get a pizza, get parking specifically. And there's also one on the 13th, is that correct?
Yes.
Correct. I know.
The 13th also at?
Yes, they're both at Riverside.
Yep. And this is like a three grade band, is that correct?
Yes, three grade band.
So everyone should go. Amazing. Board comments. Anyone have anything to say?
Couple of things on the sad and positive side. So obviously, we had some very sad news in early July with the passing of Anna. Since that time, there's been a lot that's gone on. There's a memorial celebration of life this past weekend. This coming weekend, there's a group that's gonna be participating in a charity ride in Plymouth and we formed a team called Anna's Ride. And that supports New Hampshire NAMI, the National Alliance for Mental Illness and specifically Suicide Prevention. And that group has raised like $3,000, so kudos and towards their target. And then on the 21st, another group has organized a run and it's a memory and that's gonna go from the high school. So there's flyers around town, people wanna participate. It's a run-walk, that's four miles. And I talked to Rob this morning, I believe the registrations for that are up to about 165 people. And that also goes towards a different organization that is focused on suicide prevention. And all of the costs of that race are being underwritten by Delta Dental. So so far, they've raised about $5,000.
Wow, that's amazing.
Things that are happening in the community and the families heartfelt about the amount of support that they've had.
Thank you. Jonathan?
Nope.
Suzanne?
Andrea?
Jonathan. And everything, I'm excited for our first meeting with the team and members of our team. Happy number.
Thank you, Rob. That's really important to talk about, I appreciate it. Okay, we're on to current business. Summer hiring.
So summer hiring is in full swing. We still have some openings, check those out on our website. Most importantly, I know that Laura will talk more about our personnel update later on in the meeting, but we are still looking for at least a special education teacher at Harold, a long-term sub to teach middle school math. We need some instructional assistance in at both Maple Street and at the high school, a speech pathologist, a network coordinator, and definitely need someone on the coaching side, girls soccer JV, and a field hockey assistant. So if any of those are your hope and dream, please apply.
Thank you. Is that seven or eight?
From the HGA standpoint, we're looking at about two.
Okay.
That would be in the HGA. The others are more support staff, ancillary, important positions, but classroom, you know, manning the classrooms is one of the things right now.
Thank you.
Did you say, was that substitute math?
Yes, are you hoping to get in there?
No.
Get to signed up right now.
I told you before, I like math so much, I took out the one twice, so I would not be your candidate.
Middle school math, eighth grade.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we have had a lot happen on the policy side. And there have been some changes that have happened at our state legislative level. Andrea and Suzanne, do you wanna talk us through where we're at?
Yes, so, and I just didn't know, too, I know we've kind of skipped over this, but Amy, if there was anything else you wanted to say, we did all of our board comments, if you wanted to say any other words.
Oh, yeah. We'll have a little update later. Would that be okay? Under the consent agenda?
Sure. I just did, I was like, did we skip you? So for policy update, we have, I'm gonna do it backwards. We have three second reads that were from earlier in the year, which were JICL, School District Internet Access for Students, JLCK, Special Physical Health Needs of Students, and JLC, Student Health Services, and School Nurses. So those are continuing on, this is our second read. Next meeting, they'll be on to their third and final read, excuse me, final read. So if folks can make sure to take a look at those and if they have any questions, let us know. Policy committee has met twice already this summer because there was, there was some movement at the legislative level statewide that needed to happen at the beginning of the school year. So we wanted to get right on top of that. The biggest one where folks, we know are gonna have some questions, are for JICJ, which is unauthorized communication devices. So the school board will be setting the policy for that. There is not a ton of wiggle room for this policy because this is state statute. And I know that Amy has some updates, because really, it is the schools that will be setting the procedure for how this will be implemented. And basically, this is what has been known as the Bell's foul, phone ban, but it extends far beyond phones. So this encompasses watches, tablets, computers, phones, whole nine yards. So Amy, did you have, wanna?
Yeah, I would just echo what you said, Andrea. There isn't a lot of wiggle room in this policy. There are, you know, every school across the state is trying to figure out what will be the procedures once we implement this policy. And so I would just encourage folks to be on the lookout from more umbrella communication from me to just talk about how we're going to manage this as a community. And then you will get more direct information from your school administrator because based on the developmental needs and expectations of students, that will look different. This implementation of this policy will look different at the middle high school than it will here, than it will at Harold Martin. But I do just want to talk a little bit, it really does, it is a comprehensive policy that will cover all sorts of devices, not just cell phones. So even though it's been affectionately called maybe the cellphone ban or bell to bell, it does cover really any device that is not issued by the district. So this will also require us to have conversations about bring your own device, that is something that was captured in this policy, smartwatches, any kind of device. I do wanna make sure that folks are aware that in the policy, if your student uses a medical, a device for a medical reason, say to monitor glucose levels for diabetes, that is certainly covered and allowed during the school day. So we're gonna navigate this together, but be on the lookout for more specific communication. And if people have questions, I would encourage them to reach out.
Great. Go ahead.
Are students allowed to get a permission slip or waiver to bring their own devices?
Not under this policy, but it really would continue to be on a case-by-case basis.
Yep.
And what this policy also looks at is what can the district provide? Our go-to, under this policy, will be what can the school issue this student to meet their need?
Okay.
So I think in the past, there was a BYOD, you know, policy that really is rescinded with this.
And do we have enough for one-to-one coverage of laptops at the middle high school?
Yes.
We should, we'll be able to sign it.
Okay. Cool, great. Jonathan?
Yeah, it's that B I O Y D policy that I was curious about because is, has that been, has that been what's happened in the middle school and high school, is that you can bring your own laptop or bring your own and work on that?
I don't know the volume of students that bring their own device, but I do think it's something that we will have to discuss because we do have students that feel that a Chromebook, you know, there are some limitations. I mean, there's just no way around that.
Yeah, I was just curious, I didn't.
I mean, it certainly grows over time, like certain middle school students, using their devices very high.
Yeah.
And it's serious. I think more of a problem.
Right, yeah, I was just curious as to what the, the standard operating procedure was like as of last year. Then you could bring in your own laptop. Okay.
Amy, can you talk a little bit about how the rules are being, you know, coming to being, like who's involved in the process, are students involved in the process, or he, like, how's it all going?
It's a good question. I think I spoke with Principal Kelly this morning because he's trying to navigate it from the high, middle high school perspective. And it's my understanding, and Lucy can certainly jump in, is that they had some restrictions related to the cellphone up until this year. They were allowed to use it in the hallway and during lunch. So our implementation will really be limiting those, those pieces. Chris's plan is to first, we're gonna talk about it as a leadership team on Monday and really look at what does the K-12 perspective look like, what kind of devices do we really need to address, and how can we support, you know, students and families through that? Certainly, there is an admin council at the high school level and a student group, and we'll be looking for their input. Really, not about the policy though, as Delsey said, are, this is a state law and we are obligated to implement it. So we will do our best to ensure that there's clarity around how it's implemented and, you know, ensure that students get the support they need. This, this will be a shift for many, many students.
Yeah. I think, and you know this, and I think that you guys are on top of it based off of the fact that we're having this now. I would say as much expectation setting with parents and if middle high school students is possible, I think if their parents are used to having their kids have a watch on the floor on the little scale, they'll probably need to have a lot of consistent communication.
And we really, when Chris and I were speaking this morning, we were really talking about almost like a reset to the beginning of, you know, our teaching careers respectively. If you needed to get in touch with a student during the day, you would call them in office and you would try to get a note to them. I met with Dan Miser this afternoon, our athletic director, and he's really thinking about how will coaches, you know, notify students if a game is canceled or practice has been shifted. So those are all things that we're trying to navigate. But I would really just ask parents, you know, for their cooperation as we implement this. I really am hoping that they understand, you know, not sending your student to school with a device, especially a watch.
Right.
That will be really important. We don't wanna pit the parents against, or the students against their teachers because they're just going to be required to implement this law.
I think another thing that I just, issue spotting related to this, you know, when we look at the J I C L, the second read, it's gonna be important to emphasize for students that you don't have privacy on a school device. And I think there's gonna be a learning curve because A, they're kids, and so they don't think about consequence, and B, they're used to privacy on their own devices. And so I could see there being that necessitating some additional reinforcement for students that you don't have any privacy on a district So how that's done, I don't know, but just an issue spotting, it just, in my line of work, I just think it's gonna be important for students to really understand that. So, just a thought.
How to highlight it within this policy.
Just to make sure students realize that when you're used to privately texting or whatever, communicating on your device, when you're on the school device, you might be able to work around, but you don't have privacy.
Yeah, yeah. And I think this is bridging off, we should go to the next policy. But the, I think there's probably like a nice chunk of curriculum to teach around, like, this preps you for your working life, where you have to like bridge the things.
Right.
I think it preps you for, like, severe permanence on the internet. Like, there's a lot, I think that there's an educational opportunity for generally being.
Definitely agree with that. I just think about the non-completely formed adolescent brain in terms of consequences.
I think the other piece that Suzanne was mentioning too that we talked a lot about in policy was also the impact and implications of this policy on teachers.
Yes.
And the fact that we also don't want this to be like the teachers being the phone police all of the time, and really being thoughtful about that as well.
What the consequences are. We talked about, I know from my standpoint, like, sometimes a phone costs more than, you know, my paycheck, and God forbid, anything happens while my phone is in my possession, right? And the students would really have some words about where they would like them to be. So just having that all thought out, I know we talked about that, that was on the radar, about who was going to be responsible if it escalated. Were we gonna preemptively say, you know, they go in some sort of shoe slot, or do they, you know, we weren't interested in making mine facts, but, it's not his facts, but taking something off the teacher's plate, it's just, I can't imagine I'd wanna fight.
Every day, all the time, every day.
And that's not our goal either. But we do know that, you know, I think it's interesting, when the legislature implemented this law, there is going to be a learning curve now because students are used to a certain set of behavior, they have a certain skill set now, and they need to learn a new one, right? Because instead of being on their phone or sending a funny meme, that is how they communicate and how they connect with each other is via their cellphone. So I think that, I don't want anyone to think that this is just going to magically, you know, require kids to now, you know, jump face-to-face. That is going to be, there's a feel.
I'm really interested in, like, because you're conscious of that, what sort of programming or what things to be in place, either through the advisory program, or, you know, on one hand, we're dealing with what I would consider a distinction for some scale of this technology, but also social interaction and learning those skills. And I, so like, you have advisory and there's lots of things that you can do, and I'm excited to kind of see where this goes.
And I do think in talking with Principal Kelly today, he's really going to be targeting lunch hallways. I think that, and Lucy, you can jump in, I think the expectation in the classroom is that your phone is away. I don't think there are kids that are on their phones all day long. They, we did use, some phones, sometimes phones were used for educational purposes, and the legislature had an opportunity to do a carve-out for that and they chose not to. And so case by case, you know, school districts, I think, are looking into it, but in our area.
But I do think advisory is study halls.
They can teach those skills.
That's gonna be, but advisory, I know the kids are used to using it in advisory because it's the end of the day and they're texting home, or they're communicating sometimes with their boss, or coaches or whatnot, and that's, that's not.
Those are all things we're going to have to work through.
Put the baby advisory on the radar.
Not to get bogged in this too long, but I also noticed that there was sanctions in the policy. Is that in the NHSBA? Okay, so they put the sanctions in there as opposed to like a separate procedure. I was just kinda curious, when I saw that, that that's a policy, it strikes me as that's more of a implementation of the policy.
Yeah, nope, that was all.
Okay, and so that might, must be connected to the statute?
I think it is.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, this was both JICJ and the next policy, I think, to A, B, Parental Bill of Rights, were very restrictive.
Yeah.
There was, we really did not.
And I would just.
That just jumped out at me.
To add to that, Jonathan, that that's, the procedures of the actual consequences will be in student handbooks, we're working on.
Right, and I saw that's also statutory, yeah.
Can we talk a little bit about timelines? So this is, needs to be, so we've got our second read, which I'm assuming would happen at our meeting on the 19th.
Yep.
Does this need to be fully approved though, by the time that we start school? Like, do we need to waive a third read and accept it?
So this will be, this will be implemented, like, the procedures will be in place and it will be, it will be happening at the beginning of school.
Okay. Whether, regardless of.
Regardless, like.
Whether this is.
But to publish the policy.
We can waive it. We can waive the three reads and implement it right away. We could do that today and then continue to do our two extra reads. If we would like it implemented right away, we could do today's read to give everyone a chance to digest it. And then at the next meeting, we can waive the third read and approve it and then kind of reaffirm it.
Yep.
At its third read in September after school has begun.
Okay.
But it will, like, it will be happening at the beginning of school.
Okay. I think it might, like, I think in the lens, I don't think we should approve it tonight, because I think it's a big thing for us to wrap our heads around, even if we've been learning about it since June. I think that we should consider whether or not we wanna just get it approved at the next meeting or make any changes that we wanna make because I think that having it for people to refer to, and I know we'll publish it as a draft policy after our second read.
Yeah.
I just think the more information that's out there, the better, because this is a large practice shift.
And this policy, like, tonight, is available for the public to read.
Great, thank you.
The public can click on this, they can read it as it stands.
Lovely.
And we could always approve it, modify it later.
Right.
If we decided in practice that it required some kind of.
There's like a little something we can change, which is very little.
Thank you guys.
Sure, so there are a couple other policies, that was just the first, first read. The other first reads we have, I mentioned, policy A, B, which is the Parental Bill of Rights, that was also something that is new this year, that was a legislative action that is also descriptive. We did not, there's nothing in that that we were able to change. So that is as it stands.
Can you?
Yeah.
Is this, is the first, the very first line, is that grammatically correct, or am I just misreading how it's, is it morale or moral, or what is that?
All parental rights are reserved to the parents of a minor child in this state without obstruction or.
So number one, to direct the upbringing in the, is it moral or religious training?
Moral or religious training.
Moral or religious training, okay.
Yep.
I didn't know, moral or morale?
Oh, I believe it's moral.
Yeah, I think it's.
And maybe good morale as well. So this is another one we're going to go through.
Awesome.
And then the other ones that we have are all required policies. So we have KI, which is Visitors to the Schools, JFABD, which is Admission of Homeless Children and Unaccompanied Youth, and JFABE, which is Education of Children in Superior. So these are policies that we either have or that we need that are required by law. And so as we go through and have audited our policies, we have found the holes, and are working at, you know, updating old policies. So that's really, you know, Suzanne and I have talked, that's really gonna be our focus this year, is continuing to audit our policies and try to update them.
Thank you guys.
As we can.
Thank you. It's just an exciting roster of policies, it's a lot of work. Thank you. Meeting twice over the summer is a big deal, it's my pleasure. Okay. All right, finance update.
So we had a finance committee meeting back on July 22nd, and we talked about really three things. So we talked a little bit about tracking special education costs, specifically out-of-district placements and transportation, just to sort of see where the ebb and flow of that is, and also how it impacts, you know, our contracted services, staffing changes, et cetera. So let's do a little bit more dialed in on that for, from a financial perspective as the year goes on. The second thing that we talked about was the monthly financials, and Laura talked a little bit about some changes that she would like to make to them in terms of not so much the information itself, but how the information is presented and the style in which it's presented. So I think we'll see that in the first run-up here, end of August?
Yeah, for the September meetings. We have August financials to look for.
And then we had a discussion about how we go about the budgeting process and just sort of philosophically thinking, I'm just gonna be blunt, you know, we do the process, we end up with a really big number because we have wants and needs, and department heads, right down to, and by department heads, I mean people like Mr. Stone and then social studies department heads, so on and so forth, put everything that they want on that list. And the principals whittle, but we end up seeing a number that is more unlikely than not. So rather than doing that, let's figure out what our costs are moving forward for staffing, healthcare, et cetera, and where we're at, and then how big of a piece of a pie can we afford? And then as department heads are doing that, they have those numbers in mind. So the first round number that we see is more realistic instead of unrealistic. And that, you know, I think one of the things sitting on budget committee is them encouraging us to consider different ways of doing our craft. And I think this is a slightly different way of doing our craft and, you know, try it and see how it goes. We haven't set up our meeting schedule yet, but as with last year, we will try to meet just prior to when the monthly financial report is coming out, so that if there's anything in there that we need to discuss or recommendations to the board, that can happen. And then as needed, as usual, once we get into budget season.
Great. Can I ask you a question or a comment about the budgeting process and what you're just talking about? So it's interesting, because something that I think we've talked about before is, I do like hearing the hopes and dreams of like what the teams like, because I think it's good to have forward-thinking, visionary, like optimistic, hopeful educational teams. But I do also understand that like, it can also feel terrible to like, keep asking, keep being told it's never gonna happen. So like, I think the biggest part is like, how do we think about with like, our educational team and our administrative team, thinking about what that balance is between what is a forward-looking, progressive, like, like improvement-oriented, like, we are a great school district, we can always be better? And what you're saying of like, knowing, if we have an understanding of what the lay of the land is. And I think part of that is some strategic planning, it's really hard to do up and down across the district with as many employees and all of the pieces, but.
Yeah. And I've thought about that a little bit.
We talked about it.
Yeah, and it's, it's almost like you have a second tier, right? It's almost like a CIP for those things.
Right.
These are the things I absolutely positively need this year to make the ship run. These things would make the ship run better, but we may not be able to afford it, but to make you aware of it, here it is. And if it's a year where we've got, you know, a little extra money in unassigned fund balance as we move into May and June, maybe we can make those things happen then.[1731.53] And maybe those things that are on that secondary tier show up the following year.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. As we all know, I keep a lot of lists. I love lists because it helps me remember, like, when you get to vague, like, what people asked for in October. I don't always remember from, like, our 36-page sheets. Shocker. Um, so I think that that, I think that's actually really interesting. And, and you honestly never know, like, right? Like, it could be like two years ago, we have a 20% G M R, or we could have 8%. And like, that swing is massive in terms of what we can actually absorb in all other areas of the budget. So thank you.
Yep.
Great. Terrific.
Can I provide a different financial update?
Yes.
Um, on July 2nd, I don't know if you know, the Supreme Court made a ruling to uphold the convale ruling that adequacy was not being properly funded by the state of New Hampshire. That is great news for us. What that means is that the base adequacy for 2025 is around $4,200. This ruling says base adequacy, which is for every single student, not your free and reduced, not your special education, is changing now to about $7,300. It is a 72% increase per student for us.
Did they uphold the number, though?
They said it at a minimum. It needs to be $7,356.01 per student.
Right, because I thought they kicked it back on the number.
Um, no, they motioned to reconsider, the state did, and it got denied.
Okay.
Wow.
So that, that 7,356 number now holds. There is a reasonable amount of time for them to implement this. It does not have a specific deadline of when they need to implement it. We're expecting it's around a year and the state has not said anywhere regarding how it's going to be funded. There's been some bills on the floor that, um, are saying it's funded 100% through SWEPT, which we know SWEPT is local property tax. So we will see what the state decides to do regarding how they're going to fund that new mandate, but for Hopkinton alone, it is an additional $2.7 million, which is about $2 off of our tax rate. So that would be huge for us. So as it progresses, I will keep you updated, but good news on the state front for adequacy.
But it will likely not be implemented for this year.
Correct, correct. Yep, we have our adequacy numbers for this year. Um, and I will be doing our projected revenues for the state for September 1st, so it will not be a nut. They are not changing for September 1st, 2025.
Thank you. Okay.
So do you think we'll budget with that in mind or probably not? They, so the state will provide us with adequacy aid numbers.
Okay.
They'll take our beginning of year numbers that we provide to them and then they budget for next year. Right now, they've given me our adequacy for 2025 that I have to use and it's about $3.8 million. This would add 2.7, but it will not be until next year.
But would we know if they're actually going to add it by the time we start actually doing budgeting in October?
We will, yep. But by the time School District Committee comes around, we will know if they are adding that in for next year or not.
But will we know in, say, December?
Hopefully, yes. The, the, the budgeted projections come out in November timeframe.
Okay.
For the budget projections, but, so we'll see. It may, it may be because the state started a new budget in, on July 1st, that it may, they may try to take two years for this to implement because then they can budget for it in their cycle, or because remember they have a two-year cycle. So it may take up to two years since there's no deadline.
My mantra would be high hopes, low expectations. So like.
Exactly.
Go for the best, plant the doors.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay. All right, for our first meeting, I think that's it for current business. Are we ready to move into the consent agenda?
We are.
Let's get it. Laura has personnel.
After. So we have few personnel certainly for, that have changed over the summer. We'll start with our new hires. I have two long-term subs. This is not the long-term sub math position that Amy spoke about. We have Timothy Kurtz, who has been an AP proctor for the district. He's been a temp. He's coming in to cover a, a leave, so he'll be a long-term sub in high school math.
Is he a student at Hopkinton at some point?
What's that? I feel like it's their parent, their father.
Um, he, though, worked in Hanover. He's like a math, when, when I saw his name, I also, his wife taught at both countries. So he's been a longtime high school math teacher.
Robert Childs, who was a long-term sub for us for middle school English, is going to be coming back to do high school English to cover a leave. And then we have a new I A, who has recently accepted a position at the high school, Mary Tripod. Rebecca McKenzie resigned at the end of last year and Mary will be taking over her position in the high school.
Great.
Resignations. We received a resignation, um, between last meeting and this meeting for Laura Old, who is the case manager at Harold Martin. Fortunately, she is moving on and will not be back. The biggest part actually comes with current employees that are changing their contracts. So one good move is Natasha Murna, who is an I A at Maple Street, will be an I A in the Student Support Center. We had spoken about this a little bit last year and during budget season that Principal Sinoni was looking for some support in the Student Support Center. Uh, and Natasha will be filling that role.
Right.
Which does leave her I A position vacant. Marissa McGann, who is a preschool teacher right now over at Harold Martin, she's actually .8 preschool teacher and .2 I A. So she did some of her time as a Hess employee, is, has been nominated to take over Laura Old's position as the K through three case manager. This is a great opportunity, I think, for Marissa to, she's been in preschool. I know my daughter has worked with her and she's fantastic. What that means is that we have a preschool position that will be coming available with this approval. It has been a difficult administrative burden to handle Marissa's contract because she is .8 H E A and .2 Hess. So we would love your permission to post it as a 1.0 preschool teacher. She does, I have confirmed or spoken with her that she does do the work of a teacher. There's no differentiation in the time that she works as an I A versus the time she works as a teacher.
My luck.
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, I do think that when we first hired Marissa, there was a differentiation of duties, you know, in that role. And just over time, we've added to the program. I think they've tried to expand the educational offering for those early learners. So it does seem like the right thing to do right now is we're trying to recruit in August. It will be tricky to find someone to take, on the best days, to find someone to work part-time. That's a unique person that wants that type of work. Um, so it would be our recommendation, when Laura and I were talking about it, to post for a preschool special education teacher. Um, and that would be full-time in that capacity. We would not try to search for a .2 I A. But I guess we could add it to Megan Burns's .15, but we're, we're not looking to do that at this time.
Okay.
All right. Do you need anything specific from us?
I think when we go through the consent agenda, if you want to approve that now, that would make sense, but I do think it, we need your approval to make that position .8 to 1.0 for the posting.
Do I have a motion to make the preschool teacher .8 F T E to 1.0 F T E for the posting of the job for September hiring?
Yes. So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
It's us. It's, I'm sorry, I have a quick question. Um, even though we just approved it, is there, uh, what is the financial application of this? That will trans, so I'll take the I A part of her salaries and she would transfer it over. She's already under Hess benefits. She's already retirement eligible, so it will not be a large impact. It'll be somewhere around $5,000.
Okay.
And we feel like we can absorb that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. Great.
Megan Burns, as we spoke about, is a preschool I A. She has asked to reduce her contract to be only three days a week, and so that changes her to a .67 for the start of the year.
I tell you, that preschool is a really special spot because changes are making me emotional, but it's okay. People should do the things they want to do in their lives. It's great.
I understand.
This is good.
We're also going to find someone new. That's great.
Yes.
Yes.
It'll be great.
Yep.
Um, and lastly, Rachel Vent, who is an I A at high school. With Charlene Betts retiring at the end of last year, Rachel has been nominated to take over that position as the library assistant at H M H S.
Great.
So her, um, I A position, uh, will be potentially vacant as well based on need. And then additional contracts. Last on the list is Bob Wilner was the A M crossing guard last year. Now, he's being nominated to do that position again this year. And then Kristin Dineski is being nominated for one additional day per week. She is a .85 right now, so she's really four days a week. She will be covering one additional day with the leave of absence of Allison Kittredge. And that goes through Christmas break.
Right.
Questions on the new hires personnel? It's been a busy couple months.
Yeah. There's a lot happening.
It's great. Mr. Wilner is a joy to see.
I might need to go down in the morning just to have.
Honestly, just go down and it's, yes. He is. Awesome. Uh, some changes to Schedule B over the summer. So when we nominated in June for, um, P L C, we'll start there on page four. We did not have a grade three P L C team leader at Harold Martin, and since then, Madeline Donahue has been nominated.
Right.
So Maddie will be taking the P L C position for team leaders at, at Harold Martin. And we've had some changes at Maple Street and P L C. Tina Blinn will be doing grade four and Amy Roth will be doing grade six.
Great. Can you just say since August, and we might have a fresh crowd out there, uh, what is P L C's deal for?
Oh, professional learning community. It's, uh, based, it's an evidence-based practice.
Get that dollar jar back out.
That's right.
Oh, you don't like the acronyms?
Yeah.
No.
A professional learning community is an evidence-based practice based on the work of Robert Dufour. And he developed questions that teams can come together and look at what students are learning. How do we know what they know? What are we going to do when they don't know it? So we have P L Cs that those teachers come together, they look at data and then make decisions based on it.
Great.
Was that too much?
No, it's my goodness for Amy.
Because my response would not have sounded like. I love it.
Um, and then we had a to-be-determined for Maple Street School for Student Council Advisors, and Tracy Martin and Carol Ann Neff are going to continue those roles this year. They are the essentially incumbent advisors for that program.
Great.
And lastly, sorry, Kindness Club, which is one of our new pope curriculars. Karen Vittoria will be doing that at Harold Martin.
I noticed they don't yet have a student council person for Harold Martin.
They do not. Not yet.
They were added things in the last contract, so hopefully somebody steps up and does it.
Interesting. Questions on pope curriculars?
No, I have a small fleet of children who would love to run for, uh, student council, but we will table that for another day.
Look at my shocked face.
Amazing. All right, amazing. Coaches?
Coaches. Do you need me to read out all the coaches or do you just want me to show you the nomination? This is our nomination slate for coaches?
Let's, yeah.
Okay.
Worth it, yep.
All right, uh, field hockey varsity is Kate Hoganberger, who was the coach last year. We do not have a field hockey assistant coach at this point. That one is typically based on need, remember, so it's, it's often like how many students end up signing up for those teams. Field hockey J V is Liz Kovar. Soccer, uh, boys soccer varsity is Scott Zipke. Boys varsity assistant coach is Josh Katt. Soccer boys J V is Jonathan Stahl Smith. Soccer girls varsity is Mike Zahn, who is also an I A over at Harold Martin. Soccer girls assistant varsity is Renelle LeHoullier. If I said that right.
Nice and done.
Soccer girls J V is open currently. Golf, uh, varsity golf is Ted Wells. Varsity cross country is Rob Roth. And varsity assistant for cross country is Norm Gupel. For the middle school, field hockey middle school is Tim Upton. Middle school cross country is George Sable. Middle school of boys soccer is Travis Martin. And middle school girls soccer is Alyssa McDonough.
Amazing. Thank you to our coaches.
If you want to coach soccer girls J V.
That's right.
Now's the time.
Now's the time.
Now's the time. Any questions on the fall sports nomination slate?
Nope.
Moving right along to donations. We have one donation today. And it is for $2,000 for a book vending machine at Harold Martin from the Kyle Benninger Memorial Trust. This is a book vending machine that is essentially a positive behavior reinforcement for students. They get a token and they can purchase a book out of the book vending machine. It does not accept money. It accepts these tokens for things that Harold Martin deems worthy of book tokens. I apologize for that terrible wording. Maple Street has one here, but it is a very good positive behavior reinforcement. And so it's about $7,000 total, but this $2,000 brings us a lot closer to getting that vending machine.
I know Carrie has spoken very, very highly about the book vending machine here at Maple, and she was jazzed to, to bring that here and I think it'd be great at Harold. Thank you.
Yeah. All right.
Ooh.
Thank you. It makes me so happy.
All right, want to walk us through some financial updates?
Do. There's two pieces of, um, specific financial updates in the board packet. I'll start with the unassigned fund balance one.
Look in the drive folder, you guys.
Yep. Does everybody see that?
Yep.
Couple of nice charts and tables here. So the last few weeks have been very busy doing audit prep work, going through the financial audit, and while our trial balances, which is essentially our chart accounts, is not quite done. It is substantially done. And so I feel like I can bring draft financial numbers to you today at this meeting to discuss. So with that in mind, our preliminary fund calculation for, we have enough to certainly cover the committed fund balance, which is that item of the $25,000 that we committed at school district meeting, $10,000 to the vehicle trust and $15,000 to the technology trust. We also were able to do what you tentatively voted on in, in June, which is maxing out our 5% contingency at $1,077,325. That will allow us, if we remember, the contingency fund, previously Article 10, is that fund that by state law, we're allowed to hold up to 5% of our net assessment in order to use that in future periods next year for emergency authorizations, items that the school district needs money for as long as we bring it to school board meeting first. It does liquidate at the end of next year, remember, so we annually update that. And then unassigned fund balance, we have the $500,000 that we promised at annual meeting for tax relief. And then right now, draft has an additional $472,000 that we need to discuss. So on the second page of the memo is essentially a update about a breakdown regarding where that comes from, for the most part, and then what we want to do with it. So I did speak with our auditing firm about this and one of the options that we have is, over the course of '24, '25, the school board voted to do projects out of our building and maintenance expendable trust. Those projects have not been reimbursed yet by the trust fund as they are ongoing this summer. So that chart at the bottom is the encumbered amounts by June 30th, 2025, meaning that I have a quote or a contract and a purchase order for those amounts that the school district can choose to vote to reopen those motions essentially, to reconsider them, and choose whether you would like to pay for these items out of general fund versus out of the building and maintenance trust. I am not asking for that motion today. Um, I'd like you to review and consider, and I'd also like to have a little bit of time to make sure that the auditors come back and verify this unassigned fund balance number before we vote to do anything.
Okay.
However, knowing this, I would ask that you consider making the motion to maximize the 5% contingency fund, because remember that was tentative based on fund balance and I need you to affirm it.
Okay. Great. Before we get there.
Yes.
Any questions, thoughts, discussion?
So I think that the, uh, the plan to take that balance of unassigned fund balance and put it towards that C I P spending makes a lot of sense, particularly given looking ahead and being hopeful that the security redesign project is going to come in at about the number we thought. Because if we use that unassigned fund balance, and correct me if I'm going off the tracks here, Laura, but we use that unassigned fund balance to pay that down, that money stays in C I P, which means it may, would be available as revenue for that security redesign. I mean, arguably, I would say, you know, if we could set aside that 429 for that project, I would do that, or I would at least encourage people to do it. But we can't. So this gives us an opportunity to have that money available for that project. And we had already, we've sort of spoken about, you know, with a million dollars in contingency, we could probably draw four. That draws another 429. Again, crossing fingers that the number comes in at 950 or so. We're, we're really close to the target without having to raise. We're really close to the target without having to raise a whole lot more in taxes. So it just is, it could be very fortuitous for us to keep up with our CIP and prepare for the possibility of doing that project.
And another thing to consider is just, you know, the idea that this is a one-time reduction to the tax rate if it all goes back. And we have to think a bit more long-term. We can't just think this year, we have to think next year as well. And so if we have that one-time reduction, it's very, very unlikely we'll be able to meet it next year as well, which means the swing will go down. And then we'll have an artificial increase because we'll have that revenue shortfall. So I just want to consider that, that we had about $750 at the end of last year. We've talked about five, and we planned on that, and we put that towards annual meeting. And if we go down to this, you know, additional $471, we'll be a bit lower in the tax rate than we want to be, understanding that we've got things to add. So I just want you to think long-term instead of immediate about town as well and the impacts it has.
I think it's, I think it's also important to remember that the CIP has been perpetually underfunded since we have started the CIP. And the whole purpose of the CIP is to avoid getting ourselves into another pickle where get the can down the road and then have to talk about a huge bond. So I think that's also important to keep in mind when we talk about, you know, funding some of these projects, that there is some, some real future consequence that I think we should consider when we think about using it on these projects.
I'm thinking about, thank you. Thank you both. I'm thinking about something that we've talked about is, I think you, Laura, is helpful. And I think the long-term, thinking about like how we're trying to manage the tax rate and taxes in town. Something I think we've thought a lot about in the, in the context of thinking of, we are not in budget season yet, we do not need to put ourselves there yet. Like we are not started with school. Something that I think I really want us all to think about across this line is we are trying to get increasingly, increasingly accurate and precise. I think we're trying to improve our precision with the numbers that we're trying to get to with budgeting and being able to shrink that fund balance. I think so that we're not seeing large unassigned fund balances at the end of the year. This is something that I know I've certainly talked with Rob about, and I think you guys have probably talked about in finance, but it's like you don't want to shrink the fund balance to zero because it's impossible. Also, you never want to be in a deficit.
Never want to be in a deficit.
And so like you need to think about what is that line where you have some fund balance that is a responsible level. And I think we had talked about a number and.
5%.
5%, thank you. And so I think it's trying to think about, does this feel good? Is there increasing work to do? If there is increasing work to do, how do we line that up so we keep improving and getting more precision as we move through the fall? Yeah. And I don't know what your thoughts are, but.
Yeah, I mean, I agree that, you know, the 5% number again is not our number. That came from the municipal association as a good practice targeting. If you're just in around or just below that, you've done a good job. So even with the additional $429, we're still below that 5%. You know, as Laura and I looked at some of these, I think it also gives us an opportunity to look at our budgeting practices and look at these separate lines and try to say, okay, does this make sense? Was it an anomaly? Do we need to think about how we budgeted for this particular department activity, whatever it happens to be? So, you know, trying to look at all of this as an opportunity just to get better and learn from what we've been doing.
Yep.
You know.
And if I may, I will add, speaking of anomalies, if you remember last year, we did pull from the special education trust $240,000. So that was a piece of revenue that we wouldn't have necessarily had. And this would have been less if we had not chosen to do that.
And we cannot put money into the special education trust from unassigned fund balance?
Cannot. You can only do that as a warrant article at town meeting.
Thank you. Just clarifying.
Yeah. It's a good idea.
Good.
Okay. And I just had another, pardon me if I'm wrong, too, you know, having, through an audit, having kind of an unassigned fund balance remaining like this, this is also something that we've had, right? Like this, this also isn't.
Correct.
Abnormal.
It is not abnormal.
I feel like we face this every year.
We do. In some capacity, we face it every year. We're facing it with me this year and Jed. But yes, in every year, this has happened. If we remember last year, we had done, you know, certain plans of taking 400 out of Article 10, and we didn't end up needing to do that. So this is a very common thing every year that school districts face. Part of it comes from the idea that we have vacancies, right? So we have IA vacancies at middle high school. And we cannot fill those, but we can't not budget for them either because they're based on need. So that money comes in at the end, right? And that's fund balance. You also have over collection of revenue, which cannot be spent. So the district collected more money this past year, and we had a good interest revenue year. And we had a couple of kids tuition in. So we got a little bit more revenue, but you're not legally allowed to spend that. So it automatically dumps into fund balance. So those are all those pieces that collectively come into this fund balance that we need to consider.
Thank you.
It's not just that we have a gross underspend of the general fund and we're over budgeting. It's multiple factors that come into it.
Okay. So everyone noodle through it.
So we can think on this.
Yes. And if you have questions, I would say direct them to finance. Does that feel appropriate? Who will work with Laura and Amy?
Yep.
And then we'll talk about it at the meeting on the 19th.
Great.
And we need to make a motion to assign.
If you are comfortable, if you could make a motion to affirm the maximizing of the 5% contingency.
Do I have a motion to approve the maximizing of 5% contingency?
So much.
Great. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you. Thank you. And I will, just when we say that, we'll do it to the dollar. So it's got cents, and I will not encumber those.
Great.
All right, the last piece that is me, I feel like I've been talking to you guys.
So. You've been in audit season.
It's a money meeting.
Yep.
Is a budget transfer. So Policy DBJ Transfer Appropriations says anything over $7,500 needs board approval first. So I have a transfer that is in your packet that I need Amy to sign, and I need Dulcey to sign, and I need the board to vote to approve, that is for health and dental. As we, as we know, with our two new contracts, HGA and Teamsters, we offered new dental plans, and we offered new healthcare options. This is just a transfer in order to cover those lines. Now that we've seen what healthcare plans are starting to come in as, what dental plans, who's signing up? This is a transfer of appropriations to cover some lines that didn't have enough money in them.
Okay. Any questions? Do you have any, I think I'm allowed to ask this. One of the things that we introduced for HGA was a lower cost plan. Do we have any early numbers on that? Are we allowed to talk about that?
Yes, we're allowed to talk about that. Early numbers are coming in favorably. We have more people switched than we expected. I can have more detail on that for you for budget season, but right now it is favorable. And we did not have anyone choose the high deductible health plan. I can tell you that, that nationwide plan.
Okay.
And with the transfer, does this mean that we're appropriating more money or anything like that? Or is it just basically shifting money?
It is just shifting money to cover a negative balance in a couple of lines. This is the very preliminary one. There may be more as, as we continue to hire. And if we know teachers start getting paid in September, their deductions will start to pull in September, and then we may see another one.
Okay. And I'm assuming as you shift from, you know, how the budget was set up to the way that you set up the budget, that this will also probably happen as we go on. And you build your own budget, which would be very exciting.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve a budget transfer 203 for health and dental?
We already did it.
No, we didn't do it.
Nope.
I'm lying to you. I'll make the motion.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve a budget transfer 203 for health and dental insurance for $143,000, $840,000?
So much.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? To rep it. Now Amy.
Great.
Thank you, guys.
It's your time. Thank you, Laura.
I have to head out. I have driver's ed. But I've done a great first meeting on the side for the year.
Yeah, it's nice to see you.
Yeah, nice to see you all.
Really quickly, sorry, do you have access to all the things? We will work with you. I know that we had talked about it, but we'll make sure that you're hooked up.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is my first meeting. I've been here in this role for a month, and I just can't tell you how wonderful it is to be back here. And I want to thank each of you. I've been able to see you in different capacities, both on committees. Every day, you know, I'm walking back to Laura's office and saying, well, what about this? Where do we find this? And Jody really is just keeping me in line all the time. So I'm just so thankful that everyone has welcomed me back, and it just feels great to be here. I'm sure that you know that the summer is a really busy time for our work, right? Our job is to get the buildings back up, hire the teachers and staff that we need, ensure that the buildings are ready. Matt is doing technology projects. So for the SAU-level team, there's a lot happening. So with about, you know, what, three weeks before the kids come back, we're building the bus and moving it forward. During this time, I've had an opportunity to engage with the community and do a variety of transition activities. I've been able to meet with parents and educators, support staff, community members, starting to build those relationships, gather input, figure out what is important to different stakeholders, areas of strength, how I can be of service to all of you and the community in this new capacity. I met with Jim, you know, facilities and operations is new for me, and he is just an impressive guy. I keep saying to everyone, Jim is just amazing. He went through all of the, you know, projects that they've been working on and that you've supported. Many of them are on the list that you were just talking about. Selfishly, I was just excited to see that Maple Street got a new boiler and a hot water heater. That was a long time coming, and so, and the paper is out front. But he and his team are really looking to monitor those timelines, make sure the expenditures and our, you know, those projects are being completed on time. Our goal is to ensure that the buildings are safe and clean and ready for students later this month. Staff and personnel, we've talked a lot about that. I want to thank the building principals. It's a lot of work in the summer to interview and look at your candidates and make sure that they're the right fit for your community. I want to thank Laura and her team. You may know that Laura's been training two new people this summer. And today, we had Sandy work out of a different office, just because we want to keep it fresh. Her office is getting a little bit of a makeover. And so every day you come, it's an adventure. It's like a choose your adventure over there, right? Where will I work today? But, you know, as you know, you already know this, but Laura is just such an impressive professional. And she's trying to bring two new people up to speed that we hope to introduce to the school community when they come back. We've got Sandy, who's going to be doing more accounts payable work. And then Connie is more of the HR. So Karen did have her last day. We all cried and gave her flowers and ate cake, ate our feelings. And, but she may come back and do some subwork for us. And then Karen, Lori's last day is later this month.
August 22nd.
Miss both of them very much. So we've been doing a lot of work there. I'm grateful for all of the staff that's looking to diligently manage and hire all of those positions and the changes. I do think, and I want to piggyback on something you said earlier. One of the things I always really loved about being here is that one, one of our community members, one of our staff wants a new opportunity to grow and learn. We support that. And so when you think about people moving from, I know preschool is a special place, but Marissa's ready to grow. And we want that for people. We want them to feel that they're meeting their own professional goals. So I'm thankful for folks that are thinking outside of the box. Thank you to all of you for letting me join your committee so quickly. Finance was between Jonathan and Rob and Laura getting me right up to speed about, you know, where our money is and how that's being spent. And then policy, I really feel like we've hit the ground running. We've looked at, you know, what is required. But you've also been supportive, I think, to bring forward some policies to help some of our vulnerable populations of students, so I'm thankful for that. Everyone, every day is thinking, the start of the school year is coming. So everyone is getting ready. You know, this is sort of like, you know, just the, it's almost like Christmas Eve. You know, we're, we're in the process of getting ready to start a new school year. You will know that at the building level, principals take student schedules, excuse me, very seriously. Are they all set and ready to go? Looking to make sure that we have the right related service providers and programming needs to meet the needs of our, of our students. Looking at professional development, what do teachers need? What do staff need? Getting those classrooms and instructional materials ordered. Last week, we had teachers coming in and principals unloading boxes of materials. So it's getting ready again. And I'm just really encouraged by our collective effort. You know, the energy, it's not quite August 19th. The next time we meet, it'll be more of like a buzz, but it's that steady Eddie. I just, as we move closer to the first day of school, my goals really are trust, collaboration, and shared purpose. And those are the words that I focus on. And I'm looking forward to continuing to partner with all of you and this amazing community.
Thank you. Staff are back in the buildings.
So we've got, August 21st is new staff orientation, and then new staff are that Monday, so 28th. And so that opening day, we're talking about, you know, it'll be my first speech. It's a big deal for me. So you guys will talk. It's like me talking, which I'm already having bad. Already having nightmares about it.
You do as well.
It'll be fine. Jody says it'll be fine.
You can't be worse than I am. So it'll be great. I cry every time, Amy.
Oh, I cry all the time because it's a privilege, right? I mean, this is such a gift to be in students' lives in this way.
That's right.
And so then on that day, we also have, you know, a welcome back for our staff. And then, you know, really getting to work and getting buildings up and making sure teachers and staff.
Right. School starts on the 27th, and I got a reminder that we have a new traffic pattern in Hackington Village.
Yes.
For any members of the community who might be thinking they might want to be passing through between, say, 8:35.
Don't do it.
And seven, or seven, 7:35, 7:55. Just give yourself some extra time. That, those first couple of days of school before Labor Day, everyone parks and walks their kids because it's adorable and the cutest. But it does mean there's always a traffic jam, and then it cools without a new traffic pattern. So.
Be able to look out.
And then no school on the 29th and no school on the 1st.
That's right.
Because the fair is in town.
Yep.
That's right. Okay, great.
Perfect. I did see a notice that the Hackington Fair is hiring. So if you have, you know.
Sure.
Come here first. Yes, come here first. Yes. But, you know, I think it would be a good opportunity for college students that want to make a little bit of extra money for that weekend.
That's right. Okay, cool. All right. Anything else? Any questions for Amy for her first meeting?
Welcome.
I appreciate. Oh, are you going to ask me a question too?
No, I was not. I just, I've enjoyed working with you on policy.
Yes, it's a good time.
Yeah.
It's a good time.
It is. We are as good as it can be.
Yeah, I think it's fun. I think it is fun, too.
Yeah, I actually like policy, too. All right, and with that, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
Do we need a separate motion to make that position one after each?
We already did that, right?
Did we do that? Did we vote on it?
Yeah, you voted on it.
Oh, sorry.
You said you're great. I.
Yeah. I didn't think we'd actually made the move.
All right, committees, we've heard from Policy and Finance. EMC is not meeting until September. I think Safety and Security, we don't have a meeting on the duck yet that I know about.
The what?
Safety and Security.
Not yet.
Great. CNA, PVP, the school is not in session. CIP, guessing same. So we have no other committee updates, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, thanks to the chair who-
Oh, I forgot about this part.
-put me on the tax impact fee committee.
Thank you.
Which is now complete, and the final report is being written, and we'll go to the planning board. You know, I, the whole thing will come out very soon, but essentially the chart from the planning board was, is there any ability for us to calculate tax impact fees? But in order to do that, you have to have a CIP in place that is specifically for expanding, so because of capacity. So if, you know, you build 10 houses, and that means 20 more kids, and you got to build two classrooms, you have a CIP for that, you can have a tax impact fee. If you do not have anything on your CIP, you cannot have a tax impact fee, which is pretty much where we're at. And the committee, we met with police, fire in the town, and so that'll be rolling out. And there's like a 20-page report that you're welcome to read, and I'll make sure we get a copy. There is a little bit of discussion that I will bring to our CIP committee about hypotheticals in terms of if we, if the town pushes that they want to do that, one of the things that when Amy and I met with the other person on the impact subcommittee, you know, if we were to have few projections that said, you know, you get 100 extra kids at the middle high school, how much more space would you need? And without spending a ton of money, you could look at what would modulars cost to add to the school, like a wing, a quarter, et cetera. But I also spoke for myself on your behalf that my guess was the school board would have no appetite for spending our own money to do a study to find out that how this hypothetical would have to play out. In other words, we don't really want to spend $50,000 in engineering fees to look at something that we don't know is going to happen. The average, we build about five houses a year. That's, that's the average over the last 10 or 12 years.
Okay.
Anyway, it was interesting. Thank you.
Thank you for being both the budget committee and the school board rep.
It was good. I learned some stuff. It was good.
I did learn some stuff.
Rob, when is the next budget committee meeting?
That is a really good question. September, but I'll, I'll get the date.
Great. Cool. Great. Awesome. Okay.
I haven't put it in my calendar yet.
Okay. It is all published because the draft schedule is published. It should be on the desk.
They don't send out 8 million invitations that somebody sends out so you can put all of that stuff in your calendar.
Jody, by the way, making sure we all, we all show up at the right spot.
At the right time.
Okay. Also, just a quick note, as we wrap up committee updates, we are trying to figure out a new policy for committee meeting minutes. So if you have had meetings over the summer, try to, I will just prompt those of you who are on committees that have met.
We're taking notes.
Perfect. Yeah, exactly.
We're taking your meeting minutes.
And I think we're trying to put a new policy, a new protocol together so that we can get them uploaded into Diligent. But just as a note to everyone for all their committees as they start the year, take the minutes, I will send a reminder, but like, keep it rolling.
Yeah.
Start strong.
Policy is still working on it because the way that Diligent is structured, there is not enough spaces for policy to put there.
And I can't, I can't post policy.